2024, we'll start with the pledge.
For the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrant bills are signed. Approval of the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to adjust the agenda. I've moved to move under new business, see executive session four, five, six E legal and move it up to right after number six, department heading committee chair updates.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, so we're gonna move it right up to the department, okay, so. You know, pens, there's a funny here, there we go.
Do you need a pen?
Oh, no, I got one, it was just malfunctioning a little bit.
For the error.
Yeah. Okay. Minutes of last meeting?
By table, please.
Want to table them?
Please.
Okay, town administrator, weekly update?
All right, just a couple items for you, first is let you know some training that my staff had over this last week since we last met, I had told you a few weeks ago that they are going to be replacing all the passenger plates in Maine, so the chickadee plate that you all have or a lot of you have on your plate is being replaced with a North Star and pine tree plate, similar to the veteran change they did a few years back, this is not optional, when they start issuing the plate, when you come in to renew, you will get a new plate, if you have a special number or vanity, there'll be a process to get it switched over, but the goal by middle of 2025 is for everybody, for the chickadee plate to be completely gone. So we had a training class from DMV on that. The next class that we attended was regarding absentee balloting, there's the big changes that we talked about with the open enrollment, the semi-open, so if you're unenrolled, you can declare a party on election day, being a Republican or a Democrat, and you can participate in that primary, absentee ballots are now available, so if you're looking to get one, just come on in. Yesterday and today, we had Title 38 training, this is your town meeting in elections, we do have a, we have had a staff member out for a couple of days, so we didn't give the training as much attention as we would have liked, but did hear some interesting changes that I'll present to you next week, some of the, one of the biggest one that the clerks talked about that they think is going to be an issue is that in the past, when you go in to vote on election day, you're allowed to wear a candidate's shirt or hat or button, you're going in to vote, you're allowed to leave, you know, you're allowed to wear that, so now they've, they've changed it so that you cannot, they're actually recommending that clerks have a handful of white t-shirts, so if the voter can't put their shirt inside out, they can be handed a t-shirt if they want to go and vote.
That is so dumb.
Yes, so more details to come on that, but that was the big one, and this is passed by your legislators, not your clerk, so remember that when you see me. Transfer station is closed on February 19th coming up for President's Day, one of the approved holidays in the personnel policies, so that notice has gone out, the Springvale Ice Fishing Derby contacted me today, just more as information to let you know that their derby on Saturday, the 10th, they are using the parking lot of Iron Tails with his permission to do their weigh-ins, it was more just a courtesy call, so the board would know why there were going to be so many cars there, we talked about mass gathering permit, he does not feel like he's going to be over that number, so it's more of a FYI. The York County Sheriff's Department did another traffic detail, and I apologize, I had to pull up my phone because I left it in my office, another one of the four-hour blocks that the board scheduled, and this one was a little different than the last couple, the roads were on Acton Ridge, H Road, Milton Mills Road and Sanborn Road, out of the cars, there were three citations issued for speeding, 28 vehicles were observed on H Road and only one was speeding, 46 on Milton Mills Road, one was speeding, five vehicles on Sanborn Road and none were speeding, and 22 vehicles on Acton Ridge Road and only one were speeding, so I thought it was good that they provided how many cars actually went by, went through, so that you'd have an idea of the traffic, so they'll update you after the next one. Next is discussion.
Can you find a way of summarizing that on our website?
Sure.
Those, however many.
Do you want, so you want all of them that we've done so far?
Just put them out there, because there was so much interest in having this done in the first place, let's show the results.
Got it. Last, which I think we can talk about, we need to talk about a public hearing date for the floodplain ordinance that you guys agreed to move forward with the code office, but we're also going to be talking about a mooring ordinance, so I'll put that together, so that's all I have for tonight.
Okay.
On the mooring ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
We should share that with the Lake Association.
Yeah, it's under new business, yeah.
I'm sorry, okay, all right.
Sorry.
Department head, committee chair updates. There we go. Hello, Mr. Smith.
Hello, how's everybody doing?
Good, good.
Thank you for your patience. So, hi, Rick Smith, I'm your local EMA director, and I'm here to just kind of answer any questions you guys had, I know that you wanted to get together to chat, and do my best, I lost my voice over the weekend due to stomach bug, I'm clear, I'm outside the National Institute of Health recommended window to be here, so.
So you were, you were going to start us off by telling us a little bit about what the job entails, what the day-to-day operations and kind of what time, kind of time you're putting into it.
That's good to remind me, because I got a lot of things going on all at once, so my job as a local EMA director is to basically plan, train and prepare for large or natural disasters, things that would exceed what, you know, a normal emergency response might be, or a single case, things like that, so we have plans in place for, you know, floods and major blizzards and, you know, extended power losses and ice storms and things like that, and then it boils down to like natural health issues, so say we had an area that became, the drinking water became a problem, or like large area, not single, single houses, or if we had an active shooter situation, things like that, so we have plans in place for that, we train as a county unit, so that everybody involved and all the other town local directors are on the same plan, and we just have those plans in place, so if Acton ever had a large disaster, I would establish an EOC, we would start operating out of that, EOC is the Emergency Operations Center, so we'd start operating out of that space and start handling our own incidents, basically, we'd operate under a unified command system, so all the different parties would have a representation there, so we would see the fire department, the sheriff's office, emergency management, which is myself, probably somebody from the board, I mean, let's be honest, probably Jennifer, because, you know, stuff has to get done, and Kelly, because at the end, bills have to get paid, right, and then we'll hopefully, if the emergency is large enough, get reimbursed from either the state or the federal government, so every time that we have flooding and we lose roads and things like that, I reach out to, well, now it's just Will, I reach out to Will, hey, what did it cost you to replace those roads, we gets put into a database, York County submits that information as one unit, then so does Cumberland, everybody else, if the number gets big enough, the state goes yes or no for reimbursement, we haven't broken the threshold yet for anything that we've had, but we try every time there's a storm. Dave, Ed, you guys are familiar with that stuff, from your years.
Yeah, we've been reimbursed many times.
Yeah, just since in my time, we haven't, we haven't had anything that's broken the threshold of the, the big number.
We just had real weather back in my day.
Yeah, it's true, wow, that's a different discussion, we used to get snow, too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, basically, that's what my job is, it's, it's local to Acton, but we train as a county unit, I work with all the other local directors, obviously, my background in fire and EMS is, plays a big part in, in doing this type of work, but, yeah, that's it, I took it on when I was the fire chief.
How kind of timeframe does it take?
To.
Question, just to be in the EMA and to keep us up with everything we need?
I go to EMA meeting every month, which is usually a couple hours, usually, we discuss like what's going on in each town, projects that are going on, things that we can help each other out with, and then we do a training, so it'd be tabletop, or how to fill out forms, or other super very exciting stuff that is federal and state government related, and then I belong to some extra committees, so I get us an extra advantage from doing that, so I'm a part of their IMT, which is an incident management team, which is a hand-selected group of people, and my job on the IMT is actually operations and medical, so those are my two specialties, so in a large incident, maybe like a countywide problem, I could be running operations for the entire county, or subsection of that, or medical for that large incident as well, so, and then that's another couple hours a month.
Well, I, I think for me, the, the thing that got me interested in this was the last ice storm, and where I believe there were close to a couple thousand homes without power for some extended period of time in the town, and wanted to understand what role the town ought to play in that, who is coordinating the response, I, I know Jennifer was actively involved, but I'm not sure that's really her role as a town administrator to do that, and so that's what I was hoping to hear from you, about what role does your office or other officers in the town play in coordinating a response for the town?
Absolutely.
Who does that, and how is that done, and, and do you think, given that's a, a recent event that was of some importance, would it be appropriate to do some kind of debrief on that and say, how did it work, did we do, did it work the way it should have, what went well, what didn't go well, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so two things I just want to point out, the first one is every year, the EMA puts on a training for local government officials to attend, that explains what I do, what your involvement is, what type of paperwork and all the things that you guys do, and every year, I, I send it to the town administrator who sends it out to the select board, so I don't know if any of you have attended that, it hasn't come up this year yet, so I'll give Dan a pass, but.
You're not gonna give us a pass, we don't know what it's gonna be in the chair?
No, but every year, I do send it out, and as far as I know, we haven't had any participation, but I know Ed sat in my seat at one time, so he knows what class I'm talking about, but it's how, what your role is in that, so next time it comes up, just keep an eye out for it, so you guys can participate and it'll help you better understand where you're coming from.
Oh, I, I think, my, during this last event, there were, there was a couple thousand people out of power, and it was, it was pretty extended period of time, and.
I was one of them, I get what you're saying.
I was unfortunate, fortunately, I didn't lose power, I couldn't believe it, you know, because I always lose power, but I think, when we were talking about it, back in the day, you know, ice storms and all that, when we had an extended period of time, of course, we were a volunteer fire department at that point in time, too, so it was a little bit different, but when you have that many people out of power, typically, there would be a group of people going out and checking on the elderly and this and that, we didn't, we don't have that anymore, is that, is there a reason why?
Well, so, you're talking about very different scenarios, too, 98, 2008, those storms, those are days and days and days.
I'm not just talking about 90, I'm talking about storms where three, four, five days, we're not talking weeks at a time, you're, you're going, big storm.
Yeah.
Talking about average storms, back in the day, you know, when there was a large amount of people out of power, you know, typically, the volunteers would go around and check up on elderly people and stuff like that, we don't get that stuff anymore.
Well, there's a bunch of different factors that play into that, too, communications, very different now, right, every, not everybody, but a lot of people have the ability to communicate via cellular device, telephone, internet, whatever it may be, so that door-to-door thing is just not a popular method anymore, it's not one that we've been taught or utilized to use through the EMA courses that I've done, until you get to extended, and then we start going, we check on particular cases, so the ice storm that you're talking about, I received zero phone calls and zero text messages or emails or anything, until the town administrator reached out to me about, I think it was one case at the time.
Well, we put three different people, elderly, in hotels.
Yeah, by the end of it, but you reached out to me, you had one case, we discussed and came up with kind of a plan of if we have one, if we have five, if we have 50, what, what's our plan in place, because we have that stuff written down, so, to walk you through it, if it's a handful, usually, the best-case scenario is, you know, we can open something here or something simple, just to keep them warm until it's short duration, if it becomes long duration, talk about putting them up in hotels and things like that, if it becomes more than that, we can talk about opening a shelter, so we have agreements with the Acton School Department, and the superintendent down there and I have talked every year, hey, are we still shelter, yep, hey, this is what we're gonna do, yep, okay, this is what we need, we put our request into EMA, they will give us the number of cots that we request, and any other supplies that we need, because they're now a central hub, back in the day, we used to keep all that stuff local, what they found was Acton never needed a shelter, and so all our stuff rusted, broke and expired, so now county just says, boom, I've got five, I think I got 500 cots, 500 cots, if Acton needs 50, we'll send them 50, if York needs 100, we'll send them 100, that way, they're getting taken care of and things are better, it's a central hub system, so.
So, it seemed to me to be a major storm, but I guess, I'm not quite sure if that, how that's defined in the policies and the documentation you have, but I don't believe there was any kind of coordinated response, and the question is, should there have been, at what level does an event need to reach in order for the town to have a coordinated response? And if we're gonna have one, who does that?
Yeah.
Because it's not, it's not clear to me who's, who's going to be responsible for pulling those resources together, helping to get decisions about what that response ought to look like, and then making sure it gets implemented.
So determining what that level is, it works bidirectional, so it goes, dependent on the community and how they're hit, right, so the last storm that we had inland, we barely got anything, but the coast got decimated, so they have the ability to call up stuff, and sometimes stuff comes down, the state or the local county office will say, hey, this is going to be a significant storm, we're gonna ramp up the EOC, we're gonna ramp up this, we're, you know, deployments and things like that, it's really a case-by-case basis, it depends how the town is hit, so the last storm, I was ready, I was waiting for requests to come in of, hey, we need to shelter 10 people, or we need to do this, we need to do that, and those requests weren't being, they weren't getting to me, I didn't get them, I was in constant contact with our fire chief, we were texting and calling each other back and forth, hey, what do you got, what's going on, and he was keeping me apprised of stuff, later in the day, I spoke to the town administrator, we came up with plans for the cases that we had then, as far as determining and operating all that stuff, that's my job as EMA director, so I do those things when they're needed, based on the information that I'm given.
So we gotta take that class.
Well, okay, I, I think, sort of waiting for people to call in is sort of one approach, I think, making sure that, I think there would be helpful to have communication out to the community about what kind of resources and how to get access to them are available, and so it, it just seems to me that's part of a playbook.
That stuff does get.
That we ought to have, and it gets executed.
That stuff does get shared, we have rave alerts, we have stuff that gets put out, I put it out on What's Up in Acton, I put it out on Facebook page, the county puts it out, it's up for people to participate, right, I can't force you to sign up for a program.
I understand, but just having something out, having something out that says, so that people understand, if they get to a situation where they need some warming, where do they go, who do they call?
Yep.
You know, they can call the fire department, but to simply rely on them calling in, it seems like there ought to be something more proactive, putting information out to let them know what the resources are and where to go.
That's totally doable, it's gonna depend on what the board wants to do, right, if you want to muster up and compensate the staffing required to do that type of deployment, it can be done, but based on my experience of being an EMA director here and assisting with the EMA operations throughout the county, automatically opening a shelter and things like that is not, it's cost prohibitive, oftentimes, especially in the city that I work for full-time, we'll open a shelter, because it's a city of 22,000 people, they'll open a shelter and they'll get, two people show up, and so now they pay staff around the clock to open that type of facility, I don't want to see that, right, we try to run a business smart town, and I think we do pretty well at that, so until we have requests or need, show need, I don't necessarily want to just automatically open a shelter every time either, so it, I'll leave it up to the board what you guys want to do, I work for you, but I work out for citizens.
Shelters, I mean, that one time, at one point there, we, Mr. Brazier, he's down at the school, remember when they opened up that, so people at least take showers and stuff, you know, I mean, that's stuff that I think we can, we get into an event like that, I don't think it has to be a Hurricane Irene or anything like that, to the point where you know there's 2,000 people out of power, you know, we can open up the school or whatever, just for people to take showers and stuff, something, something like that.
Yep, absolutely.
Doesn't have to be a shelter-type situation, and we did that down there, I mean.
Yeah, it entirely depends on the case, right, it's going to be a case-by-case basis, because oftentimes, and it's really one of the blessings of this community, is that if we have one or two people that need a shower or whatever, their neighbors take care of them, or somebody else does, I can turn around and point to a handful of people in this room who I know have opened their houses up to other citizens in this town, I'm not, that's not in my EMA plan, right, I don't rely on, you know, Robin delivering food to people, that's just Robin, that's what he does, okay? But we have those resources, so it's really going to depend on each case.
No, I, I think we just need to know, you know, kind of an overview of what you were doing, I mean, not saying you're doing anything wrong, we just, just get an idea of, you know, next time, if, if we have to get more involved or, or what happens, so.
I've always joked with the board that fire, you know, fire and EMS people ignore us until it's parade or they're having a heart attack, EMA is even worse, right, nobody thinks about us until they don't have a roof on their house anymore, and they go, how do I fix this?
Well, I always.
That's where we're at, but.
I always appreciate the EMA director, you know, you know, when FEMA calls up, you know, we get all our paperwork, we send it to them.
That's the key, that's where they, that's those two, they thank me and say, hell, look, checks, 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 right, we're getting the feds to pay for all the damage that happened, that's, that's when we're, that's when we were heyday, on that, EMA work is paperwork.
Yeah, there's a couple different ways to look at that, but I used to get excited about it, but now you look at it, it's like, well, someone's paying for that, but.
It's still coming out of you and I's pocket, it's just shared differently.
Yeah, yeah.
I do, I do have a question, you mentioned that, like, you put information out on the What's Up in Acton and use about, EMA does it themselves, do they only post it to social media, do we have like any other resources, I know a lot of people in town don't use social media, and they may, maybe not see that information.
So we have access to the rave system, so if you have a, a cell phone or an email, you can sign up for the rave system, and that will send out target-specific stuff, so it, it can be done in layers, so.
You said that's only if people sign up for that, right?
Correct, so we have to share that information out for them to sign up for that.
So I guess my question is, do we have like anything that does, would not be like, I don't know, this might be old fashioned, but like a flyer, or like a, a book or something that we give to people, keep in their cards or something, is that something that you folks would provide that, because if people are losing power, they can't charge the devices, most likely, I mean, we saw a situation where an individual who needed assistance was struggling to keep their cell phone charged, and they didn't have a smartphone, so like, that type of stuff may not be accessible, and they may, may not know that they have to call the town, that, you know, maybe there's more people that neighbors missed, or that we didn't get that, needed that assistance, that we could have maybe then put a plan into action, that's, I'm just making sure that we are doing all the things that we can to make sure everyone knows what they should do in the situation of like a storm like we had a couple weeks ago.
Absolutely, so physical publication material is always available, one of the things that I am, I guess, operationally against is like printing 10,000 copies and mailing them to everybody, right, because most people are gonna throw them away, let's be honest, but we have that stuff available, so if you know or there's people in the community, we can get them more information, and the rave system goes as smart or as dumb as your phone is, so it can text, it can do whatever, we also have the ability to, in certain circumstances, do push alerts, so I can actually take over your phone and send you information if it's significant enough, like if we had an active shooter or something in town, we could push to everybody on that tower, you know, avoid this area or whatever.
And this, again, I'm still learning more about this, I guess the question is, is if we were anticipating, because I know leading up to this last storm, there's a lot of anticipation how big it was gonna be, like if it was colder with the snow, is there anything that, you talked about that push notification that we could implement, something like that, just as a, hey, if you do lose, like before a storm hits, to be able to say, if this does happen, here's the information you might want to write down, or have that just beforehand?
If anybody can show me the areas that we're missing that they think could effectively hit that, I would love to have that information, because we push that stuff out, we push that stuff out, we push that stuff out, and then we still get people going, but, I'll give you an example, when I was fire chief, we switched from paper permits to electronic permits, right, because it was COVID, and we didn't want to have people interacting and handing pens back and forth and all that stuff, we put that information out, we put it out, we put it on the site, we put it on Facebook, we text people, we told people when they show up, and they still come up, hey, can I get a permit? Hey, can I get a permit, it's like, okay, so when you figure out that system, please let me know, because I'll be happy to adapt and do as many things as we need to do to take care of the people of this town, because that's why we're here.
So all of the different resources that you mentioned, can you put even a single item of each of those together? We've got a new website that we'd love to get the information on, we'll make copies here, put them out in our bulletin board, and we can also hand them out as residents come in that we think might be able to, but if you get me masters of all of that.
Yep, and I'll get you the hot links to direct hot link to those particular programs that the citizens can sign up for, now, I will say with the rave and the push alerts and stuff, even the master takeover of people's phones, if they've opted out of those programs, which you can do, there's nothing I can do, you can, you can choose to be removed from a society as much as you want, and there's a lot of people in Acton like that way, and I don't blame you, but at that point, we're gonna have to figure out a way to talk to you.
I respect that, I just want to make sure that nobody can say that we didn't try and do that effort.
Absolutely, and that's what I say, try to make our best concerted effort to try to reach the largest mass of people, and then hope that neighbors taking care of their neighbors really fill in the gaps.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, Rick.
Department.
Any others?
Department head's committee chair updates, any others? I don't see any, okay, I guess we're gonna, I'm looking for.
I move that we go into executive session 4056E legal.
Seconded. All in favor?
Sorry.
Good, okay, cool, we'll be right back. Here are motion.
I move to move out of executive session, or come back from executive session 4056E legal at 7:05 PM.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay. We'll move on to old business, 24, 25 budget, director.
So Samantha is here, because the Warren and Finance wanted to ask some follow-up questions, I think, and I think that the board has some questions on the budget as well. Leslie, do you?
One of the committee members requested that Sam come in, so I will turn it over to Joyce, who actually requested her.
Perfect.
Jennifer, is her budget in here somewhere?
No, it's not, I gave, do you have her budget by chance, no? Do you have the whole budget?
It's been here someplace.
It's not in there, it's already been before you got it, so I didn't, I mean, the total isn't here, yes.
Total is, it's just not the actual budget layout.
It's not the layout.
Do you have that, Dan?
That's 2023, Tom, if you're looking at anything, look at this one.
Oh, okay, oh, that's 23?
Yes, because Warren Finance wanted it for something.
Oh, all right.
We'll get to that.
All right, Joyce, are you coming up, is that what we heard from Ms. Leslie?
Well, we had all talked about wanting to talk to Sam about it, but I did send the request in.
Can you come up, just so we can hear you?
Absolutely.
Can you go, do you have a budget handy?
Sorry, Joyce Bachy, I guess, should I direct Sam or you guys, doesn't matter?
Well, she's right there.
Okay, just some clarification on, on some of your things, you've got an awful lot for cleaning.
I need something else.
I'm still looking for you.
The professional cleaning of the uniforms? Yeah. That's because for every sport, we put it under, so it was $75 a sport.
I thought McKinney's had stopped doing that, what didn't?
It's not through McKinney's, it was through the actual.
Who's doing the cleaning?
The, the actual dry cleaning.
Oh, so you take them to the dry cleaner?
Yeah.
So is that just once at the end of the season?
Yes.
And it's $75 per sport?
I did 75, it was 46 for the last sport that we did, but in case they go up a little bit, she charges a dollar 50, I think, a pound, is how she did it.
A pound, is she then just laundering them or dry cleaning?
She's doing the full cleaning, folding everything.
Kelly's going to make some copies of the budget, so you can see in front of him.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not there.
So it's, so, the miscellaneous programs went up from, went up $4,525, that's what they were looking at.
Yep, exactly.
I have that copy on me.
Did you want? The programs went up that much, and some of the things were considered.
I'm gonna copy.
Wish lists, but some things weren't spent last year, so I was just hoping you could clarify.
Yep.
Those things.
So which things were you talking about for not?
I can't find it here.
I don't have the right one on me either.
She doesn't, Leslie, do you have your?
Sorry, I didn't have any more ink to print tonight.
What are you looking for?
Rick.
Trying to get the, the ones I sent over.
She's making copies right now.
My copy, I think she's making it.
Okay, perfect, but, because you had wish list items that were, you have money left over from last year that wasn't used, I thought that laundry.
You mean from this year?
From this year?
Yeah.
And that sort of thing.
And how much is that?
What?
How much was left over from last year unused?
I'm not sure, I didn't have the breakdown of what we had spent yet.
Okay.
So I couldn't, that was the one thing I couldn't fill in.
But even like, and please, I'm not picking.
No, no, I know, I know, believe me, I know.
Okay, I, I am not picking on you at all, but if you paid $49 last year for uniforms, and you took it up, is that what you said, 49?
It was 4680 or something like that.
4680, and now it's?
I can drop it down, I have no problem dropping it down, I was just nervous to drop it down too much, because I had already originally said 100 for it, and I dropped it down to 75, because I was unsure if she's gonna go up in prices or not.
Did you make a phone call to see if maybe? Did you make a phone call to see if maybe that would be the case?
No.
Cause you almost went up, you went up like 45%. Forty-five, half, 90 bucks would be, you know, doubling it. So you didn't go to 75.
All right, that's the actual budget.
Thank you.
That's the same thing I have.
Well, this is your budget.
Thank you. Nice.
But I thought it was gonna have the comparison with last year's on it.
Doesn't matter particularly.
Just a reminder, we gotta make sure we're speaking into the mic and nice and loud because we're getting notices that they can't hear the different, I mean, two people kinda sharing one, so. You wanna ask your question and then kinda step back and let her answer and we'll go through.
Yep.
Just to make sure that the public can hear.
Works for me. Yep. Well, there, there were a lot of things, uh, so let's go back to the, the cleaning of the uniforms. Okay. And there's a $2,000 line.
That's not cleaning, that's new uniforms.
New uniforms. And how much is a new uniform?
We easily spent the 2,000 last year because it's, they're very expensive. Um, and we are getting more and more kids that are coming to the sports that we've had.
How much are the uniforms? So, do we know?
They are usually anywhere from 60 to 100 a set. For cheer.
And mats are $2,000?
Yep, that would be the last 2,000 that we would need to be able to get that full 40 by 40 that we need.
Didn't we just buy mats?
We did. We don't have enough yet. We're looking just to try to find something else that'll, we'll be able to use what's remaining, and then we still need more for next year. And then once we have that 40 by 40, we won't need anymore.
And I noticed you were looking for just under $2,000 for, uh, grounds.
Um, I had taken that off because I didn't realize that.
That's been removed, Joyce. 1945, um, has been, we did remove that.
Yep. I, I accidentally left that there, not thinking about it.
Yep. And, um, then maybe you could just explain what those last numbers are. Operating budget of 33,220 and, um, which number will change. And playground, 60,000. I'm not sure what any of these mean.
We took the playground off as well. Playground shouldn't be there. Um, cause that was something that we had talked about and we're gonna wait until we get the actual number of what exactly it is that we need.
And there must have been an additional cut, because the budget that we've moved forward for the miscellaneous programs before cuts was 28,175. That's what's in your spreadsheet. So even if we take the grounds off there, that only brings it down to 31,275.
That's because the one that you made copies of doesn't have the wish list items off to the side.
Okay, and the wish lists were 57, 57, how much? Isn't it 57? That brings us to 25, 575.
I guess what, a, a lot that I'm wondering about Sam is, I know last year you had a lot of money left over. The year before you had a lot of money left over. And two things, are the projects getting completed?
The two projects that we have right now is playground, which is kind of on hold until we get exactly what we wanna do on it, and then it's the, um, getting the parking lot finished.
It's not going in this budget then?
No, playground's not in this budget.
Okay, and it's not going in the budget?
No.
That won't be a this year.
No, the playground's not in the budget.
And.
Joyce, we, we, I explained to the rec committee at the time there that I wanna see a line item priced out, whole project before we put anything on, you know, on, on the warrant.
Great. Thanks.
So that's waiting.
And you'll get the parking lot done this year?
That's what the plan is. We're working on, we got the engineer doing the lines and all that. We just gotta get the boundaries done and stuff.
Yeah.
Make sure that's all taken care of first. We're working on it.
Sam, the uniforms that she had asked about for the cheering, how many, do you have a complete inventory? Cause I know each year we continue to buy them. Do you have an inventory of, if we look at what we've purchased, um, how many you have on hand?
I can get the number.
Because we bought some uniforms last year as well.
Yep. Um, because we're trying to replace the ones that are old style, um, and move forward with the other style. So I'll have to get what the exact numbers are that we have at this time.
Did you consider the inventory when you developed the budget?
Yes.
You did, okay.
Cause I, I know, well, thinking about how many uniforms, that's, if you think of, you know, $2,000 and a hundred dollars.
You considered how many you had on hand, how many you needed, and net is what's in the budget. Okay.
Yep.
Dan, do you have some questions?
Yeah, so, I mean, I know that we've kinda talked about this budget a little bit, like, two times before tonight. I mean, kinda looking at some of the proposals for the, the items that we saw, I didn't really see a need for some of those projects. I, I think I made it clear, like with the futsal, with the travel. I, I, this time, I would move that we just flatline this budget. I don't think with having funds left over last year and not releasing some of those projects, I'd say the bigger projects that you're working on, that are already being worked on, they're not in this budget. I think flatlining the rec department's budget.
So this is the miscellaneous program expense budget of current year, 23,650. You're proposing to flatline that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
A lot of those things haven't been discussed here and.
So what are we looking at here? So you're gonna, okay, cause that's the bottom number there.
No, no.
You gotta take the 41 out.
Big salaries increase, so just focusing on that one.
Pretty much 23,650.
Yeah, 20, yeah, yeah.
All right, we can make that change.
So what, what does that do though to the budget? What's being cut out of that budget?
Um, like all those extra, kinda, those wish list items, all those extra programs that, like, I had, so they talked about the trophies for the tournament, which I don't think we should be footing a cost when we're not asking teams coming. Um, we're talking about the, I believe umpires for our baseball team, which I, we're talking about.
Is Sam aware of what the impact of these cuts will be?
No, yeah, I haven't been told any of what the cuts are that we're asking yet.
And in all fairness, I mean, if the board decides to flatline, they may not delegate that, hey, you have to take this out of this line. I mean, Dan's, one of his concerns is with the new sport, the futsal, because that hasn't come up for the board.
That was a program, it's something we've talked about. As somebody who, when I was in school, Sanford has a strong program through Nason, I know. So I don't know why we'd be doing a competing program when I feel like a lot of effort should be going into existing programs that I still think need some strength. Um, one of the things was about a travel team, I believe. Uh, when we had people come up, they're talking about for, for basketball, I'd asked what that was for, um, and.
So the, I can answer that one. So that one was our middle school team this year. Did the Saco lead. The only reason we didn't have a fee for that through the rec was because a Good Samaritan had actually fronted that. And that was a thou, that was a thousand dollars a team. So what the thought was, was we were hoping to be able to offer it again next year, because giving that to the kids as an ex, an experience was huge. It has basically made them more confident, um, increased their skill level. It's, it's just been a huge drive, and we were hoping to be able to offer it to, um, the girls as well.
I, I, I know that the circumstances for this year were a unique circumstance, and when I voted on, I'm putting that forward, it was with the understanding that hopefully next year, because, because there was, it wasn't a school team, um, and there was no further conversation beyond that. So when I voted yes in favor of that, I thought it was great that the students should have a program, but I believe and I'm hoping that the school will have a program next year. So I, I don't see the necessity of having that team. So that's why I'm not.
So with that, yes, the plan is, right now I'm also the interim athletic director for the school. Uh, plan is that we will be having basketball through the school for the middle school teams. This is an extra. Their tournament games are only on Saturdays. So they'll play two, three games a weekend for basically building up their skills and that, and then they practice all week. We would throw in some extra rec games here and there as well to kinda give them even more, which would be the same thing. If they're on the school team, it's only going to increase their knowledge and their skills, um, and give them even more experience to be able to bring to the table. And then also going with the futsal, that's essentially the same thing as, why don't we just go to Nason and play basketball there instead of playing basketball as ourselves? It's one of those that it gives us something to do during the winter months when we have nothing else going on.
I think, Dan, when we talked about it, you're, one of the issues was, we never even approved that.
Yeah, we, we never, like I said, the, the thing with the basketball was, it was never anything that was talked with the board, like, the discussion was, this is under this circumstance. We never went beyond to talk about the program in the future. So that was a concern. The futsal, again, was something that was never brought up or discussed as a potential project, and I wish we could have had this conversation sooner, like, before this budget and said whether or not we thought this was a good idea. Um, I know we're having this now, you know, tonight when we're talking about budgets, which is unfortunate, but it's something that hasn't been discussed with the board, you know, whether there is the interest. Again, with that program, I, I still find, I find it not necessary at this, at this time.
Okay, so, I went down to Saco a few times and watched, and you had no idea until the end how valuable that was. So that's why she's bringing it now. Um, and to have it for the girls would be great. Now, you are in a category, in a group, and right away, they send, they figure out, you know, who has all the wins and who has all the losses, and then they place you in the right place. So if you're like a five and five team, then you're gonna be playing the other five and five, six and fours and like that. So you're, you're competitive. And the experience, and all the kids, they want to play both. And that's what we found out. The parents loved going down to Saco. Personally, I didn't, but anyway. Um, but to offer this, you know, as a rec, um, I think would be terrific. Also, the, um, you know, like I saw Wakefield, okay? They were down there. Waterboro was down there. All these teams that we're playing, and they have buses that have their names on them, and they're bringing the kids, these rec teams, down to Saco. It's just.
I'm sure the registration rate for the kids to play and the tax rate is a little higher, have we compared? I mean, and I guess not.
It is a registration, yeah.
Not, not to get off subject, I mean, my recommendation to the board is if you take Dan's recommendation, you flatline it to the 23,650. You know, the difference of the 45, what did we figure it was? Uh, 45, 25. Um, she can work with the liaison and the committee to decide if some of these new things need to be back to the board, the new sport. But between the, the cleaning, the u, the more cheer uniforms, the mats, she should be able to make the flatline work.
But that's.
And maybe still do those sports.
And I appreciate you coming up my, but that's what I mean. We haven't had that opportunity to have that testimony, to talk about how many kids participated, what the, like, we haven't had any of that discussion. And to have that discussion right when we're, we're going over budget, it should have happened beforehand.
The, the problem is, is we're just now getting to the end of the season. Our basketball season hasn't ended yet. We've got two more weeks. We've got this week and next week. And that season just ended like, I think, two weeks ago. So we haven't even been able to have a regular board meeting because our coaches are also board members. So pretty much every day of the week, we can't have a meeting because we've got games or we've got practices going on and it just, the entire basketball season is crazy.
And I, I can, I can respect that, but like, if it's something that, I mean, parents are saying that they've seen this, I would think that maybe this would be something like, hey, this is going really well. Maybe we should think about, like, conversations could have been had. I know Mr. Winch's liaison, I don't know if you've said, hey, we're thinking about, like, just, I get that you haven't had the chance to meet, but like, I haven't even heard this idea of extending this until it was shown up in the budget. Same with the futsal. There was no inklings of this going on. And like, I appreciate the testimony, like, it will sway my views in the future, but we haven't had those discussions. So I find it really hard to support moving forward with a budget where we don't know even like, we heard one parent's testimony, other parents might say, this actually was not something that we would support in the future. I just, I just would rather have more information when we're voting on something like this.
I think we had a recommendation. Uh, can we get a sense of whether or not we wanna move?
Yeah, I, I.
Anybody else on the finance committee have any other questions?
Anybody else? Nope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the recommendation right now is to flatline at a number of.
23,650.
23,650?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, and.
Yes.
Does that include the director or no?
No, that's just taking this line.
Miscellaneous program expense line. That's flatlined with, it, last year was 23,650. You had proposed 28,175. It's now down to 23,650.
So it's less than it was last year?
No, it's the same.
See, that's look up here. So, the rec director stipend is the same. It looks different right here because social security and Medicaid is broken out. The general, uh, the, the grounds is not in there because we're doing that in municipal management. It's this line right here that they're flatlining. The 23,650 is going.
So if we, if we added the 14,695 from last year for the stipend, would that be an add add to the 23,650? It'd come out to be roughly what the budget's gonna be, right?
Yeah. Okay.
So, so we got a motion?
Yep.
Second? All in favor? Okay.
I'm sorry, can we stop the sidebar conversations, please? I don't know where they're coming from, but, uh, I don't deal well with ba, background noise. Thank you.
Okay, um, who do we have next here? Road commissioner? Okay, we got that taken care of. Okay, what do we got here?
Well, we had, um, we went, when we went through, we found some, some odd numbers.
Yep.
Um, in, in your district, winter subcontracting, in 2022, there was like bizarre numbers. And you, do, do you know what these numbers are?
Yeah, I think what happened here was, uh, somehow last year when we had the, uh, special town meeting, I think that $40,000 ended up in my budget somehow, because there's no, there's no way, there's no way I had that much money in there at the end. Cause on this one.
No, no, this, this is what was budgeted. This number's what was budgeted. This was what was spent, and this is the difference.
Well, I have it right there. See the 23?
Yeah, that's unexpended. This is what you spent.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I don't, it, it really doesn't make sense to me, cause we had, we were gonna run out of money, so we had to get more money. So I'm really not.
Yeah.
I'm a hundred percent sure what happened there.
So what's the question? What are we, so we all?
The question is, the, the numbers didn't make sense.
What's number? I don't know which one you're.
It's, um, on the, um, on the spreadsheet, under District 1, the line, um, line number 504-51. And if you see, if you look at the, the prior year.
Yeah.
It's even more skewed, um, where according to the act, the budget actual on 2022, they said you had spent 86 thou, over 86,000.
Yeah, that's usually more right.
So, so, something is wrong, I think, with the line numbers. So we just.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Cause I mean, uh, last year, like in February or March, we were gonna run out of money. That's why we had that special town meeting.
No, I remember, I remember that. So, so there, there's apparently something has arrived with the line numbers.
Right. So Leslie, I think if you look at the, the top where it says, if you're looking at this one from 23 that, that we provided to you guys.
Yep.
Um, so if they had, for example, I see exactly what you mean by the 60,000 and he expended a portion and he's got that much left. What we're gonna be doing with the new chart of accounts effective July 1, is that it's just gonna be summer maintenance, 200,000. It's gonna be, you know, plowing, sanding, X amount. So, you know, he knows by one article, he's allowed to expend a certain amount. A lot of these lines are just fictitious names, so.
I know, I mean, we had talked about that before, where, you know, the lines.
If you look at the end result though, he spent 93% of his budget.
Yeah.
It's just how some of the bills might have hit, there might be some errors on it.
So, you know, it just.
It's a good point.
It was a, it was like an, you know, odd numbers.
Right.
Which is what, what flagged it.
Saying these aren't accurate.
Sounds like that's gonna be cleaned up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and the, the other question I had was, um, your mowing, your flaggers, your mowing and your stump, which is probably another part of the same problem.
Same thing, yeah.
Where, you know, you had money allocated, but you didn't spend anything.
Yeah, cause I mean, if you, I think if you looked at prior years, you've overspent those lines.
The subcontractor services, the same thing. If you look at subcontract services, it's negative. It just didn't hit the correct line.
So, if, if we're, if we're just doing that one, one line item for summer, then, then, then this problem will go away.
Yeah. The subcontract was overdrawn by 30,000, so.
Yeah.
We look at the bottom number and the new chart of accounts is really gonna make a difference, I think, for all of us.
Okay.
And, um, District 2 ones, I, I, I'm really not a hundred percent sure.
And I told Jennifer that when I requested that. We didn't think that you could answer that, so.
Perfect.
Okay, you all set, Leslie?
I'm all set, yes.
Great, thank you, Will.
So, uh, we are gonna put forward that budget line like we proposed last week, correct?
For roads?
Yeah.
All right, so now with your approval, cause those are the only two, right, Leslie, that you guys wanted to see?
Yes, that I'm aware of.
Yep.
So, we're gonna go through and talk about some areas of cuts and look at the bottom number?
Yep.
Okay.
Do it. So where we start?
All right, we're gonna start at the top. Kelly, feel free to jump in on some of these if I miss them. So there were no changes to general government, office, municipal management, um. I did wanna make mention, I know you guys pointed out, um, elections, um, as there being an, there being about $1,400 left over. That's one of them that, you know, if we have a special town meeting, I mean, there's just no way to know exactly. have a special town meeting, I mean, there's just no way to know exactly how many, so hoping that we can leave that, the 6,000, because-
It's, it's a small number.
Or petition, you know, I got a budget for a petition election, so try to have something in there. All right, we didn't make any additional changes to that page that I'm recommending. If we go down on page two, two, to this assessing, Warren of Finance picked up on an error that we had here, and we appreciate that from them. This assessing contract software maintenance, so we have Trio, we have Cardiographics, we have I-Works, we have different things that we're paying out of this, and we are going to be able to lower one, 504, 56, by $5,000. So we're going to make that 10,000.
So 504, 56, assessing?
Yeah, the second one.
Yeah.
So this assessing subcontractor, we have actual bills that we've gotten from the companies now, and they total over 32,000. The other one really came from, so Cardiographics, part of the building permit process, part of your building permit fee, there's a fee on there to plot the house. So when you go on Cardiographics and you see the actual house on there, the shape and the 911 number, they charge us per house for that. And that's what that line was, was originally used for. Last year, we did a complete overview of it, so we should be safe to drop that.
So you're dropping it from 15 to 10?
10, yeah, so. Going down to land use, did meet with a code enforcement officer today, and he took another look at some of his lines. He is comfortable with the planning, planner going down to 15,000. So we're going to take 3,000 out of that line. And then also, we asked him, based on the Warren of Finance's points, to put together a spreadsheet of the 37, 90, the equipment maintenance and the boat. So we've broken that down, and we can certainly provide it to you. Essentially, it totals 17, 75. So my recommendation is that we leave 2,000 in there, and we subtract 17, 90, and the code officer was also fine with that. So it was a good place to save a little, based on actuals.
So it's going to be, what, 2,000 now?
2,000.
Yeah, the 37, 90 goes to 2,000.
Yep. Down to the fire department. So the fire department, there were some minor changes. We had asked the treasurer, and I think the Warren of Finance saw this, to go through and actually, all of the budget, all the lines that had a, a benefit, insurance, health, longevity, those types of things. We asked her to do a spreadsheet to total this particular number. So the, so like we could see, you know, employee A, employee B, and, and get a grand total of that. Based on her doing that, there were some adjustments, you can see in green over there. So what we need to do on the bottom to flatline that is, we need to add, it's $886.
Yeah.
So it was 18, 927 plus 886. So 19, 813.
19 what?
Nope, that's not right.
It's 886.
So what's the grand total? So am I going the wrong way? 18, 97. Mine is, so that's, yeah, that's the number I just put in there. So this number, this needs to be a flatline number. This number needs to be 912, 607, based on their motion last week.
Okay.
So 887. 18041. All right, what am I doing wrong, Kelly?
We're just bringing that number.
Right, this number.
We're taking it down. It's a negative number, and it's got to be flipped, and that's what's going on.
I'm just going to do this.
I think the 18, 9 gets increased.
It does. 19, 813.
Yeah.
That was the number we had.
Right, there's, so something else is wrong with, because-
We'll fix it. It's only $2, isn't it?
All right, so I'm going to make it a, no, it's not, no, it's a little more than that. I'm going to make this a fixed number for the sake of moving on. We know-
That will, that will mess up all the formulas going down through the sheet. Can we just fix that after the fact?
Just in a second. So it's going to be all these numbers. All right.
I can fix it in the morning.
Well, we need it for the bottom number for the tax rate calculator, so we're just going to have to be-
Yeah, it won't make that big of a difference.
You don't think so?
Nah, not, not, something less than $1,000 isn't anything going to register.
We know we need to release it. Doesn't make any sense, but it's not-
Yeah, no, it worked on mine. I don't know.
I think that credit should be 19, 813.
Right, so that's, so-
Yeah, that's what we said.
Look at this one. Well, no, but look at this for a second.
No, that was our number.
It's not working?
Well, no, so see this, I mean, this number, this is clearly a formula of that, those lines added up, easy enough, right? The slugboard reduction would be-
So you plug into that cell, 19, 813, what happens? There you go.
I'm telling you. You guys all watched me do that three other times.
Sorry.
Good job, Tom. We pay you the big bucks. All right. So 912, 607. Thank you, Tom. All right.
Ken, you magically made that screen larger last week?
Yes, I did.
I didn't. Someone else did it. It's beyond my skill set, Joyce.
Somebody did. It was great.
There you go.
How's that? You don't really seem to see the count number. Is that better, Joyce?
Yeah, you don't need to-
Oh, yeah.
All right, so now we're at the right number, 912, 607. All right, so next one, so like I said, the department has have reached out to us. Animal Control called me today, and he watched last week's board meeting and appreciates the hard work you're doing in getting this budget down, and he's happy to attempt to make this, to drop his miscellaneous line by $300, if that will help.
Thank him. Yes. Every cent helps. Thank you for volunteering the reduction.
The miscellaneous-
So from 1,500 to 1,200?
Correct.
Okay.
I saw, I-
Kelly, dispatch, EMA, where are we at with these numbers?
I believe that number.
On the contract-
Wait, oh, sorry.
Yeah, but I think-
Sorry.
$300 out of that line there. I mean, it's already only $1,500.
He's wanting to feel like a team player.
Yeah.
Oh, he is.
I mean, we don't want to shortchange him either.
I, I don't disagree. Your call, what do you want to do?
What do you think, Dan?
I mean, I feel like it does a lot of work. It's $300. I don't know if it's going to do that much. It's a budget. But I mean, if he's, if he's volunteering, then obviously he feels like he can do without.
He's the department head. He offered the cut. I'd take it and move on.
Yeah, we'll do that. Good idea.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, next three lines. Kelly was working with the city of Sanford to get updated numbers.
I have an updated number for the contract deputy, which-
Oh, no, we're before that.
Where are we now?
Dispatch, don't we have some changes to?
Dispatch has not got back to me. I left a message with the finance director.
All right.
That number we put in off the bill, the 5,700 and the 4,800 for Blueberry, Blueberry Tower. And that was up until you guys, I mean, there's a discussion going on about that, so that's a to be determined, I guess.
Do we know if dispatch went up the prior year? Do we have a percentage increase that we could base it on, or did it not go up?
I, I didn't look, to be honest.
All right, let's just take a look at the previous year, because if we want to move this budget forward tonight. Do you have that, Kelly?
Do we have another copy of this? Do you know?
You want this one?
Mine might.
All right, so right here, so it's communications. So let's look at this one. So it looks like last year, the dispatch services were 24, so we need the year before. Do you have the 2022 that we gave to the Warren of Finance, by chance? Any of you have your 20? You've got two copies. You got a 23 and a 22?
I don't have it. I can go get it.
It looks like they might, whoever might have it. We can just look at, it's page four on mine, so it's probably the same on yours. We're looking at communications, number 30, on page four. Just to gauge the increase.
Page four.
Page four. So towards the bottom, 30, it says, it should say 30 dash communications.
Okay, I got that.
Okay, so 504, the professional and technical services, the dispatch.
That was 23, 149.
All right, so it went up-
That was 22.
That was 22, and then it was 24, 779. So it went up essentially $1,500. So Tom, $1,500, going to go up with it?
For the dispatch?
Yeah.
So that'll be 26, 279?
We'll call it 27, just in case, 27. Just to give us some sort of, in case it goes up, that same trend. All right.
Was Atlanta 27?
Yes. All right. And Kelly, you started to talk about the contract deputy.
It's still just an estimated amount, but they estimate our share to be 74, 250, 83.
Is that for the new fiscal year starting July 1?
Yeah.
So we only need to budget for, we should be budgeting half of the regular amount and then half of the new number?
It's, yeah, 71, 24 to 630, 25. So that's the whole fiscal year.
Well, 71, 9, 71, 972 is through June 30th, right, but I'm-
So it's, that's the price for the whole year?
74.
Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, all right. So 74, what was the wrong line?
74, 250, 83.
How much of an increase was that?
Like $2,300.
On a 70 something?
Well, it's 148 total, 148.5 between both towns.
No, I'm just, it, it, it was 70 what?
It was 71, 972.
And it went up how much?
Like 2,300 bucks.
Okay, all right, it's fine.
All right.
EMA, all right, so that's 3%, 3.5%.
Okay. Okay. Going down to roads, I don't think there's any other cuts. Roads, stockpile, already made that cut. Next, we looked at was transfer station. So I met with Robin, chatted with him a little bit, and Ed, in regards to these hauling fees, and to see how accurate they felt like the numbers were. I had Kelly pull the miscellaneous expenses for the last couple of years. And, and Robin did agree, once we were done talking, if the board wants to flatline this one at 3,000, it's a little bit of a savings, it'd be the only savings out of this, out of this department. But we think that he can, that he'll be okay with that. We looked at what he spent out of that line the last couple of years.
Transfer station.
Yeah.
What line are we talking?
Very last one, 5,500 for miscellaneous.
Okay, yep.
Robin, you're still okay with that?
Well-
I pulled the records and looked at how much you had left for the last two years.
Yep. Last year I had, when people drop off oil, sometimes they don't come see us. So when we go to dump it into the tank, it's water or antifreeze or whatever. So I take that and put it into another 55 gallon dump, and I have IPI or, it's like Clean Harbor, come down and take that. Last year, I spent $1,200 on, almost $1,300 for them to come down and do that.
Charge about a gallon, or?
Yeah, well, I had more than what I have now, because I wanted to get that, all that stuff out of the, the 20-foot container that we got rid of. The guy that hauls our leaves off kind of suggested to me that we, he was going to kind of charge us. I have not got a hold of him yet to see what the final number was, and that's what, $1,000.
I think when we looked at this line too, though, he had 18,000 left over last year and 9,000 the year before. So even if he has to do that again, and, and I'm only doing this because the board asked me to go through with a fine tooth comb, we're trying to save what we can.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
With 18,000 that was left over last year in this budget, 9,000 the year before, even if he ends up doing that again, the budget is going to be fine.
Okay.
That's just my opinion. I mean, it certainly should-
Is there a change here that you're suggesting?
I would flatline it at 3,000, or at least 3,500, maybe give him a little wiggle room, but-
Yeah. So before you have him haul those, those leaves off, charges for it, you probably ought to discuss that, because-
Right, well, he, he just kind of mentioned it to me last year, and I have not got a hold of him.
Yeah, because the agreement was that he could have them if he takes them, you know, but if they're stopped being, then we'll have to figure something else out. So.
Yeah, I will, I will make contact with him and see what he says.
So the, we're, we're doing with that number-
Let's do 35.
35?
Yeah, so that saved 2,000.
Which line was that?
That was the miscellaneous expenses.
Last line.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll make that 35. Yeah.
And again, I based that primarily off what was left over the last two years.
Okay.
Okay. We already went through the social services. We did compare to neighboring towns, per the board's request. There was a couple of minor increases, but the biggest one we found was the, obviously, Shapley doesn't give towards the Act of Wakefield watershed. We're doing some research on that to make sure that Wakefield is. And we can always make an adjustment at the last minute if they're not. But other than that, we pretty much-
So that's the only change to that line?
Yeah, there was, yeah, no other change. How did I, the Forest Committee, also, not Forest, I'm sorry, the Cemetery Committee also called, and after watching the, the meeting, trying to do their part, their tree removal headstone expenses, they think they can get what they need done with 6,000.
They originally started at 10, so it could move.
Yeah, so they're going to spread some things out, and they've got some volunteers, and again, they want to make the attempt. All right, that's, and we already took the rec was flatlined. Okay. So Kelly, did you have any other changes? Anything that, is there anything that's not 100% that the board needs to know about?
There's, starting January 25, there's a, I, I don't know, it just came on to the radar for me, the Family Medical Leave Act is changing. And on the treasurer thread, they're saying that we, the FICA might go up by a percentage point.
FICA will go up by-
Not FICA, but it's a, there, it's 1% of gross wages, is what they're saying, that there may be an increase.
This is state tax?
Yeah. But I don't, I don't want to, I, it just came on the feed. I don't know enough about it to make any decisions today. I have to-
So if that happens, that payroll for the town is what, a million two?
Yeah.
So what's that, 12,000?
Well, it would be, it would be half, so it would be-
Yeah, okay. Well, it hasn't gone into law yet?
It's coming out January 2025, and I just haven't had time to go through this. It just-
I guess my question, has it been passed, or is this something they're talking about?
Is this something we have to?
It's passed. It's passed.
It's passed? Okay. What?
I just don't know, Tom, I don't know enough about it. It came up on the feed, and I just-
Well, if it's been passed, and we know we're going to have a 1% charge to payroll, we got to just calculate what that is and carry that someplace in the budget, so we have it. I think it's around, it's going to be around $6,000 from, roughly, but you could, you know what the salary base is, correct? You have the salary base, take a half a percent, that's-
Full percent?
No, for half a year.
Oh, because-
Half a year, half a percent, and put that in a line for family medical leave. Okay?
The health is going to, the second half of the health insurance is going to, we're going to raise it by 6%. We spoke about this earlier today.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's on, I put it on-
We don't know what this is going to be. The insurance provider is saying maybe 8%. We talked about just carrying it at 6% at this time, so-
Just six months.
Just six months. So again-
Would the contingency cover that? Would the contingency cover that if there's not room in other areas?
I don't know what a health insurance cost, what are they?
It's on my spreadsheet. If, if, can you bring it up, Jen?
It's on here.
It's got to be a couple hundred thousand dollars?
The PDF you told me to send you? The PDF you told me to send you? I back calculated it, it's not that, for the six months, it's not.
No, I think it's like between a hundred and two hundred thousand.
Health insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one sixty for just municipal.
There you go.
That's just for municipal.
At three percent? What's that, ten thousand?
But only for six months.
I shouldn't do these in my head. My phone.
I don't see the...
Whatever happened here, it's...
Not sure.
So, just for municipal, I didn't calculate, I can add them up real quick, but it's just going to go from the one sixty, or one fifty-nine eight-eight-eight to one sixty-four six eighty-five. Because that's six months for the old fee and six months for the new.
So that's like five thousand dollars, at three, half a year at, or three percent, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is forty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, I don't have it in my email. Excel, just Excel.
And, uh, fire department's going to go to one twelve seven four seven sixty-six, and transfer station's going to go to twenty-eight four twenty eighty-four.
So we need to...
Go on what, healthcare?
On the health, uh, health insurance, that's the big, the new numbers in the spreadsheet.
Okay.
They were calculated on the twenty-twenty-four rates, because I didn't have the update.
So the municipal was one sixty, so what do you want it to be?
One sixty-four six eighty-five seventeen.
Yeah.
Six eighty-six, I'm not doing change. And then it's the fire department, this one?
Yep.
What do you want that to be?
One twelve seven forty-eight.
That was my number we worked so hard at, okay? Transfer station?
Twenty-eight four twenty-one.
Is that?
Yep.
And I'm sorry, I did miss one too. Um, back to the finance line. Tom and I had a discussion about, um, in an effort to save and figure out what we were hoping that the finance director may offer in conjunction with what you already have, for now, just removing that consultant line.
Yeah, let's take, if we need a consultant, it's not going to be that significant, and I think we can find, uh, the money someplace in the budget. So we'll take that ten thousand out.
Yep. So, is that, do you have any more?
Well, only a direction of the board, if, if we want to put the new finance director in at a full main purse retirement, I didn't, I didn't include him because, so that's up to you.
Is there any main, is there any, are all the benefits for the new person in, or?
No, just health insurance.
Just health insurance.
That's the biggest expense.
You got, you got social security in there?
For, for that, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we have to budget for it. Leave it?
Yeah, I'd just leave it there.
All right.
No, that's all I had.
That's all, okay. All right, so...
That's all mine is.
All right, so total budget, four million four thirty-one seven ninety, an increase of three thirty-one six thirty-eight. Now let's go to our tax rate calculator.
Can you go back for a minute?
Yes, sir.
What's the percentage increase?
All right, this divided by, right, divided by... Divided by that, right?
Probably my, it's eight percent increase?
One point?
Yeah, it's an eight percent increase. What happened?
What do you mean an eight percent?
Well, it's, if you, take that formula minus one, it will show, it will show eight percent. Well, and you change the formula to a percentage formula.
I feel like this is a test, I'm not going to fail.
I'm glad you're doing it today, Jennifer.
Hundred and eight, now I got too much. I'm going to turn this over to the treasurer, let her, let her do it. How about I do this, Tom, looks like an eight percent increase.
There you go. All right, Jennifer.
All right, so let's go to the tax rate calculator, something uncomfortable with here, okay. So we went back over and looked at all of these revenues, we just want to go through them. So we've, I mean, we've increased excise tax, we've increased permits, we've increased, we've looked at the three or four-year trend and increased what we thought we could do, um, fairly. The main revenue sharing, uh, we don't have a number yet, so we still have an increase on revenues. Um, the, so here's the net budget. Did that come over from there? Four oh three three, nope. All right, Tom, that's got to be that number. Does that not have to be this number?
That's the expense total, four million...
Oh, less the, um, revenues.
Revenues, right?
The school is, I, I mean, we, we're told that it's a, they're thinking, I mean, they're, they're still going through the budget season, four to six percent, so I think this is a five percent increase, um, from last year's, just to have something in there.
We have some folks in the school department here, any idea what this will be?
We don't yet. We didn't do the big items yet.
I'm sorry?
We didn't do the big items yet.
Oh, okay.
Still less special end and some other things.
All right, so, uh, we're carrying five percent for the moment, just so everyone understands, we, it's still a work in progress.
It's a placeholder.
Yeah, okay, so, did we take the revenue, we did take the revenue, okay, good.
So here, so this is moving five hundred thousand from the town forward, two hundred thousand from the school, and we, again, we haven't had that conversation with, with them. Uh, your tax increase, you're still at a six-point-two percent increase. So unless you either get your budget down more, or get these numbers up higher, or get these numbers up higher. I mean, originally the board wanted to be at three percent.
Hang on a minute, can you leave that up there for a minute?
Absolutely.
That brings us to a six eighty-five, is that right?
Six eighty-five.
Jen, you just want to make that bigger, I know, for some people.
So four oh three three, if it's possible. Goodbye, goodbye.
Well, it is.
Well, it's got the full budget, it's the whole budget minus the revenues, which is where that's, which doesn't make sense.
So that, uh, five million eight fifty-one for the school?
Mm-hmm.
That's five percent?
Yes.
Five percent increase?
Yeah, right there, see the formula?
Just to get a sense of the sensitivity, change that to six percent, see what happens. Going to six ninety, and it, it, just reverse that out again, what was the other number, five, six eighty-five?
Yeah.
Six eighty-five, yeah.
Yeah, so that's another nickel on the rate, so, um...
Tom, though, before we, I'm still struggling with this, and maybe I should just turn it over to Kelly, so you can do it. Um, this net budget, this is, the net municipal budget, this number should be the, shouldn't it be the whole budget less the revenues?
Uh, yes.
So it should be the four-point-four million essentially, minus the one-point-five?
Now, wait, wait a minute now.
Do you want to...
Can you put, uh, the cursor on the floor, what's the formula look like?
Whole budget, P four twenty-three minus G twenty-three.
Minus G twenty-three on this one?
Mm-hmm.
G twenty-three on this one is...
County tat, uh, county assessment.
County assessment, so we're adding that in?
Mm-hmm.
So it, um, I'm sorry, go back to the whole budget again, would you please? And, uh, that four four three one, that does not include the county assessment?
Kelly?
County assessment's in that spreadsheet.
It's in this spreadsheet?
Is it in here? I don't believe it is. Is it in this spreadsheet? That's why I carried it under the schedule. I don't believe the county assessment is in this.
It's in my sheet, it, it...
Where would I find it here?
It's not in here. Right, it would be under, it's definitely not municipal management or anywhere, so...
I don't think it's in here.
Right, it wouldn't be, that's the only place it would be, if anywhere.
And...
Yeah, it would be, it would be right in there.
Okay, so...
It would be highlighted orange, but this is Tom's sheet, he created offline, I mean, it's a little bit different than the one I have.
All right.
Okay.
So, so I'm sorry, Tom, on mine, it's in mine, but...
All right, so, without the county assessment, the budget is totaling four million four thirty-one, and with the county assessment, four million...
Oh, I see, so those two added together, that's what you...
That's what it was, so the, so the county assessment must have been in the previous page, or in the previous schedule, in the whole budget schedule. It must be in there someplace, because we're, we're just breaking it out on a separate line.
Right.
I don't know where it is in here, but it must be in there. You, you want to just page up a little bit? It's going to stick out like a sore thumb. It's going to be a three-hundred-thousand-dollar number.
Right.
Hold on, what's that?
Right there, county tax.
It's in there, good. All right, so now go back to the tax calculation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're taking...
That and that.
Four million plus the three ninety-eight, less the one five two four.
Right, because this and this equal the number from the previous page.
So that ten million eight thirty-eight, um, what's the formula on that?
So G twenty-three, G twenty-one, G twenty, and G twenty-two.
And...
So essentially the, um...
It's got nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
It's all those added together.
Okay, good, that's right.
Yeah.
So that's right.
Right, so that's right.
Then we take out seven hundred thousand dollars, use of...
So you would really, so you're, I just want to see what happens if we make one of these higher. So you would need an extra three hundred thousand.
Do me a favor, put the cursor on the seven million nine fifty-eight, or the eight, that, that line, eight million, what's that formula say?
Uh, G twenty-four.
Yeah?
Uh, less twenty-nine seventeen thirty and twenty-eight, see that?
All right, and, um, did we, did we take into account the revenue?
Yes, right here, total revenue, it's part of it.
Yeah, but where, where is, it's not in the ten million eight thirty-eight.
Yeah, you subtracted it.
Oh, it's in that formula, okay, got it, got it, all right.
So that's right, so you're good.
So, so six eighty-five.
Mm-hmm. Unless you get increased somewhere.
See, the problem with using more reserves is, we're, we're going to run out of them.
Run out of money.
We're going to run out of money, and then we're going to have a cliff, and the tax rate's going to shoot up.
Right.
Hard.
And, so we need to, we need to create a, a glide, gliding path here to, to wean ourselves off reserve use, so that... Because when they're gone, it's going to be a shock to the tax rate.
Yeah.
We're looking at, what, six eighty-five right now?
Right, and do we know, is there any wiggle room with the school budget number, the two hundred thousand, or is it too early to tell?
Too early to tell, but, you know, if we can do more, we'll do more, obviously, we always do as much as we can.
I don't think there's any wiggle room in these revenues.
I think we're locked down to where, I mean, unless we pull more money out of the undesignated fund, but like Tom says, so, you know, if we pull out a half million dollars, what do we got in the undesignated fund rate?
I think it's a million, above policy is, I think, a million one or a million two.
Yeah, so, if you pull five hundred out every year, you're, you're, you're less than three years' worth of, so I mean, that, that doesn't last long.
Well, and, um, I don't know about you, but that road assessment, um, to me indicated that we need to do some serious road work.
Spend some money there.
So we're going to have to, uh, figure out how we're going to pay for that. Um, so I think we need to hold on to reserves, uh, until we've got that capital plan for the roads.
Are those two projects right, David? The H road is three hundred and forty thousand, county was four thirty-three?
Something like that, yeah, I believe so.
Just looking at the special project.
What's unusual here is we are funding all of this out of tax revenue, where in the past, had we done that? Or had we used undesignated reserves to cover a lot of this?
We use, we use, we would use undesignated funds for some of them.
So that's one of the reasons why these rates, why we're going up six percent. We got eight hundred thousand dollars in here of...
Special projects.
Special projects that you...
Yeah, but that, that doesn't, that don't work, because they're five hundred out of there before.
Paving, right.
Five, out of that eight hundred, five hundred would have been paving the first place.
It would have been a two fifty on each side.
So the, the increase on that's not as big as it looks.
So right, so you take the eight hundred thousand minus the five hundred thousand for paving, there's your three thirty-one.
Your three thirty-one.
Right.
So I'd have to look at the thing to figure that out, so...
So, so basically we're saying we're, we're funding an additional three hundred thousand out of, uh, tax revenue here, as opposed to reserves. Typically, we would take that out of reserves. So if you were to get down to, of course, you haven't got the formula anymore, um, I can do it in my calculator.
What are we doing?
Uh, if I took the four million four thirty-one, four four three one, minus three hundred thousand, that would be down to four million one thirty-one, compared to, it's basically a flat budget.
Right.
Do we follow that?
Yeah, no, right, so you're taking, yeah.
We're flattening municipal, more or less, it's going up less than one percent.
Yeah. So...
And to offset these two projects, and we took what, twenty thousand out of both district warrants, twenty-five, so...
Twenty-five is the ninety-five thousand dollars we took out of that.
Yeah.
So, which, we appreciate it well.
Yeah.
But it gave two good projects to each side. And, and it, it didn't, didn't affect the, uh, road maintenance money, so he can still do his road maintenance and have these projects funded.
When does the school expect to have its budget?
We have our next budget meeting tomorrow night, and then we'll have our last budget meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Twenty...
We may have one in between, we may need to have one in between.
What I'm trying to get at is, uh, when could we plug in a, a, a number that would represent what you expect to have on a warrant for the school? So then we'd understand what our tax rate's going to be here.
What, what we would, what we would be able to, to give out of our revenue, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I, uh, put aside what you, what you might, uh, fund out of reserves or give back. What will the school budget be? That, that's what I want to know, when would you have that?
Well, it'll be coming close probably tomorrow night, but...
Terrific.
But, can, can guarantee that.
Understand, still subject to change, but at least we would have a number, uh, so that we could plug this in, because I think...
I love it.
I think tonight we ought to kind of release these budgets, knowing that there's likely to be, we're going to try to do everything we can to make further reduction.
I don't, I don't see where you're going to make those further reductions.
I, I don't either, but let's release them.
Everything, we, we just took three hundred dollars, we're going to doghouse.
He made us, let's let him work the show.
I mean, uh...
I tried to argue with him on the phone.
But at the end of the day, I mean...
And we've cut every department.
The amount of money that's going to bring us down to that three percent, we have to cut, we don't have that.
No, I...
You'd have to, you'd have to go to the roads to do it.
So...
And we can't, we, we're behind already.
So why don't we, if, if, why don't we, do we need a vote to do this, or we just need to, we're not actually...
What are we doing?
Uh, passing them off to warrant and finance, and what I would do is...
Consolidation, we need to get the warrant written and talk about consolidation of the articles.
That's right, but...
So you want a motion to, to move this budget forward to the, uh, warrant finance?
As a preliminary budget to the warrant and finance committee.
Yeah.
Right, because until, until it's published, you can still, if you, if, if you can, for instance, we could choose to take some of these capital items off and fund them out of, out of, uh, undesig, I'm not a fan of that, I'm just saying there may be some additional movements here, so, um...
But that would be just like...
Ninety-nine percent of these budgets are not going to change, from our perspective.
But if we do that, that'd be no different than us just taking more money out of the designation for offsetting it, so...
Can we go back to the fire department just for a second, so I can make sure I understand your direction? So the original conversation was to flatline its last year's budget, now that we've had to make some changes with FICA and Medicaid and benefits...
That's on the fire department, all right.
Right. Are you still looking for that number to be, because she gave us an updated number for health insurance, so that changed it yet again, after my struggle and my formula?
I don't know why we had to increase that number at all, because of, uh, the way we looked at it the other night, here.
Right, why did the fire department increase? Just now?
Because of the...
Is that because we're just looking through the line items for just the payroll?
No, it was because of the six percent increase that Tom wanted me to put down for the second six months.
The second six months.
Okay. In, in January of two thousand twenty-five, health rates are going to go up.
Yeah.
The carrier's saying eight percent, we said six, just to...
Okay, well, no, because I mean, when we were, when we were looking at the numbers, we were looking at, last year, I think it was an eighty thousand dollar surplus, right?
Yes.
Okay, we didn't need an eighty thousand dollar increase to make that line item work. You know, what I'm saying is, it's eighty thousand dollars.
Right. I, I believe there's money there, but I think, um, I'm trying to recall the chief's, uh...
It doesn't matter, it's me or the chief.
No, no, because we, we had a conversation with the chief about this, and I think he felt that there were some positions that weren't, didn't he say there were positions that weren't filled or something?
Well, I think that originally, the forty-eight hour...
Per diem, yeah.
That and the coverage he did at the highest rates.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're not all at that rate, so, you know, he knew there was some room there.
Well, the question I had was, you know, were increasing that line, even though there's supposedly eighty thousand that wasn't spent in there, we shouldn't even have to do that.
Well, that's what matters, so you want to keep it at the, the flat line of nine twelve, that's what I thought, I heard you say, all right.
All right. So, um, I guess we're going to, we're making a motion to, um, advance these budgets to warrant and finance with the warrants. advance these budgets to warrant and finance with the warrants. Warrants have been drafted?
Some of the wording needs to be updated, but-
But, it'll be substantially-
The majority of them is, the majority of it's done, I just need some help, 'cause I've never done the warrants before, so I'm not sure how to word some of them.
When's your next meeting?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, okay, so, um-
So what is the board's instruction on, um, do we have the warrant on here by chance, or do we have it electronically?
No.
Yes, so we need to, I mean, so if, you know, if I was making recommendations to you, obviously, the winter maintenance has to come out of itself, you know, so we can over, go over that if we have to for plowing, but do you wanna put all of the-
I thought, you see, I thought we, aren't we better off, I mean, it's kinda-
You wanna put it all together, right?
Put it all together, then the fifteen percent.
Absolutely, if you want.
Do it all together.
So I put all of District One in one article, all of District Two in one article.
Correct.
I mean, we'll, you know, we can work to combine them if you wanna-
When, when is it happening every, every, so often when we go over budget? The state allows us fifteen percent on top of that, but if we just do it under winter maintenance, that line, it's a little baby line, so, our fifteen percent doesn't carry us very far, so last thing we, you know, if we can avoid going to a special town meeting over snowplow, and that'd be the easiest way to do it.
But you can't do anything about it anyways.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta do, you gotta do it anyway, so, just, you put it all in one, it inflates the number enough, so, you could, you could probably get another three weeks.
Make it fifteen percent a little bigger.
Yeah, so, it, it sounds like we're gonna give you warrants, but we still, um, you know, for your Monday meeting, but we're still considering how we can consolidate them, so that we can hopefully streamline the, the town meeting process. And we haven't really talked about that, so, but these numbers won't change, but you may find that some of these are combined, like we're talking about with the roads, to try to get the number of warrants down.
So we won't be able to make recommendations then on them?
Is that where you're at? You guys have gone through all of it, and you're ready to start making the articles?
Right now, I mean, we went through the information that you gave us on, um, this past week, I went through that, and, and, and we've asked all the questions, I think that-
When do we need a final sign-off from the warrant finance committee?
We were scheduled to have, to give you, um, our recommendations by the twenty-first.
But at this point, we can't, the problem is that I, I can't combine the warrant without the school articles. So, I mean, you know what I mean, we have a placeholder, we don't have the school warrant articles, and their last meeting, you said, was the twenty-
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, so I can't insert those articles into our warrant.
Is that because of the numbering only, or?
Well, I mean, numbering and-
But we could draft them, though, and put them in there, change the numbers, you know, the sequence.
So when are you voting on the school? We were voting, um, we're supposed to vote on the school the twenty-ninth, um, I don't, I don't see why it would be a problem, is if we could vote on the rest of them, and then just insert, you may take the vote from the school and, and insert it in that.
Yeah.
I don't see how that, why that would be a problem.
Well, we'll get you the numbers for sure, reflecting all these changes, we'll drop them into warrants in a format similar to what was done last year, and then we'll look to consolidate that, and you should get those, hopefully, we can take that up in our next meeting, David?
Yeah.
The consolidation, we'll do it on our next meeting, and if there are changes, we'll let you know what they are, but the budget numbers them, it's, it's just, it's just words, it's not numbers, they aren't changing.
So do you want us to consolidate before we send it off to them on Monday?
No, I'd give it to them, so that they can at least look at that, unless you don't want it.
No, 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 I mean, we've, we've got the meet, the, the meeting scheduled, I've got, we've got one on Monday, and then, um, our next one is the twentieth, um, which-
Maybe, I'm sorry to interrupt, maybe we could do that, you know, like the zoning and the ordinances, and try to, you know, get as many of those done on Monday, because if they vote on a warrant article and we combine them, then they're gonna have to revote, so.
Right.
Well, they, they, they can hold off until they hear from us.
We'll have enough for you to vote on Monday.
Final warrants, after we, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, go ahead and do all your work, and, you know, uh, hopefully, uh, you're comfortable setting yourself up to sign off on the numbers, or at least take a vote as to whether or not you endorse them or not, I guess that's what you do.
Okay, yeah, all right, well, I mean, until we have the actual warrant, we, you know, we're, we're still not gonna be able to have a, uh-
A final vote.
A final vote, yes.
Understand, but you can, you can clear, uh, your position on all the numbers.
She's saying they've already done that, they're ready to vote on articles.
Oh, really?
You guys are fast with your share, huh?
Yeah, no, not quite, I, I thought I understood.
Is that what you're saying?
Did you say you had essentially gone through it all, and you were ready for the, to vote?
We went, we went through, what do you guys, well, what do you guys think?
You ready to vote on articles? Either way, we're gonna have it to you on Monday, so it's a mute point, and we'll have something-
We'll get you the warrants on Monday, they won't be consolidated, you'll hopefully get them the following week.
I mean, and we can certainly go through them, and if we have any questions, we can come back on Wednesday.
You'll have all the ordinance ones, those will take up some time.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
Chance to consolidate.
We'll be getting a copy, are we just going over here?
Yes, sir.
I know, I can't read it from here.
Oh, okay, no, we'll get it to you.
Joyce?
Uh, yeah, David, thank you, um, a couple of things that might just be little twigs in the way. On the cemetery, uh, does their money include the cemeteries we are perpetual care, or that we, the town, are supposed to be taking care of?
Yeah, they have a regular three thousand dollar line here, this is their regular budget, five oh nine, five nine.
Yep.
The six thousand down bottom are special projects, so that's what they're-
They've got a list of other cemetery titles.
That's their professional care there.
That's, okay, that's the ones that we have the accounts for, okay, great, and, um, as far as the ordinances go, we have the one that we have to have in, from the, uh-
The state?
The state, yeah, thank you, and, um, we have one that I think was changed once before, we'll look at, that's the amount of gravel.
Oh, yeah.
That was a correction, because the chart wasn't changed.
Yeah.
And then you've got the pet burial, and you may possibly have a mooring, depending on how the rest of the agenda goes.
That's, that's my question.
You'll, by the end of the night, we'll have it all sorted out, and copies for you on Monday.
How do you possibly enforce it?
Well, that, the mooring.
The mooring?
Oh, the mooring.
It's in the ordinance, we'll spell it out to you.
Okay, and, and, um, I mean, I feel terrible for anybody who has, you know, a dead animal issue.
Oh, that, yep.
But the word animal, okay, a deer dives out by your, your well, what are you gonna do?
Well, it clearly, it clearly says burial.
Oh.
I'm not sure I understand the issue.
Talking about the code articles.
How can you enforce that?
The, uh, the ordinances that are put through.
They've got a public hearing coming up, too, the planning order.
We'll get more information, but yeah.
We'll need, we don't have the, um, language for the ordinance for, um, well, the mooring, obviously, we don't, but for the, uh, the, the one that's required by the state, we haven't seen that.
They're all in the ord, they're in the ordinance, they're already dumped in there, so you'll get them.
They're all in there?
Yep, they're in your warrant, I'll get it to you.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
So we're all good, right? So we're, we're sending that, the finance committee's gonna have that for Monday, correct?
Yeah.
Monday.
Okay, I guess we're gonna move on, uh, finance director.
Hey, I just gotta say thanks to everyone, uh, it was really great seeing how department heads, the finance committee, and, uh, everyone just sort of came together to make this process work. I think last year, we were in April trying to do this, and here we are in February, we're getting it done, and, uh, so I, and, and quite frankly, I think we've got a budget that's gonna be probably closer, uh, at year-end to the actual, so, uh, thanks for everyone's efforts on this.
I don't think I've ever seen it more transparent.
Yeah.
I mean, with, with everything up on the board and whatnot.
Yeah.
My finance director job description.
Nah, but-
We're making cuts. I wanna make sure that everybody, nobody's made a cut in their budget, they're all the same as last year, not more, so.
Um, okay, and salary increase we have in there, what, three and a half?
Three point two, three point two-five.
Three point two-five.
That's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just hold on to that for now.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and let the finance committee ponder it.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, uh, we're gonna go down to new business, finance director, job description.
Did you take my pile of papers, even?
I think I did. Hold on. We have a, uh, an advertisement for a job description for finance director, we've talked about this a couple of times. Here is the job description, is that what you're after?
Yeah, the posting, they gave you all a copy of the posting?
Uh, I don't, did you, I don't, I haven't seen that, Jennifer, I, I, I made a final word change, did you print it off again?
Yeah, I got that, yep.
Okay.
I had it.
All right.
Well, it's well-written.
Yes, it is.
Tom has proofed it as a liaison, um, it's, yeah, I mean, I'll have to step out and get it, I had it, but, um-
Well, do we really need to approve the posting, or is it just the posting of the job?
You've created the position, Tom as a liaison has approved it, I mean, you're gonna talk about the mooring, do you all have the mooring one in front of you?
Yeah, why don't we talk-
So we need board authorization, we just need board authorization to post the job.
Correct.
Yeah, we wanna see the posting.
Okay, fair enough.
You do the mooring, I'll go get it.
Why don't we move down to mooring?
All right, moorings.
Jennifer's doing that, we're gonna go down to mooring, ordinance draft.
There, uh, we've asked legal counsel to draft a, uh, a new ordinance for moorings for, uh, in the town of Acton, and, uh, this was based on some feedback that actually, I think one of our lake associations had received from, um, DEP, suggesting that we should have one, and as the counsel looked into it, they found that a number of towns have these, and it basically clarifies where moorings, who can place moorings where, you know, in, in, in a, in a lake, a great pond, I think, is what they're actually described as. So we have a draft of a policy, of a ordinance, that, um, I think it's, it's, when I've looked at the other towns, it's very simple, it, you know, there's, a lot of it is just definitions, there's like three or four paragraphs that really describe what can be done, and so, um, we wanted to advance this as consideration, the thought is that we would share this with all of our lake associations in the town, let them, you know, provide some feedback on this, we've got a couple represented here tonight, and so, but we'll make sure that all of the, um, the ponds and great lakes in the, in the, in the town of Acton receive this, we'll look for some feedback.
Only problem I just thought of this is, these guys wanna be voting on this ordinance on Monday, don't they?
Ah.
So that might be a little tough here.
What happens after they vote? Do we have a public hearing on this?
Yes, you're required to have a couple of public hearings.
But we can release it to the, to the, uh, lake associations, we'll have a public hearing, they can come and, you know, e- express their point of view, and then we take a final vote on it at that point?
Yep.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Did you pick a public hearing date while I was gone?
No.
Okay. Well, the only reason I ask that, 'cause we're gonna tie it with a floodplain, and the floodplain has to be done fourteen days before, seven days published, it's kind of, you know, it's got some requirements in it, so.
So, the floodplain one, it has to be done fourteen days before, it can't be done?
Yeah, well, they're, I'm just using as an example, there are strict direction on when, when the public hearings have to be done, so many days before the, the town meeting, I'm not boring you with all the details, March sixth works as a public hearing for both of them to meet all your requirements.
You can be around.
Is that okay? I've gotta advertise it. Two. Or you can do it February twenty-eighth, I mean, we're, maybe sooner in case you get public input, I think you're-
Well, I mean, the March, the March sixth works, I, I think the longer we hold off, maybe we can get some more input out of the, out of the lake association.
All right, but we're remembering that we have to, to have the public hearing, if to make any changes, we have to get it to warrant and finance for a final vote, you have to then vote on the warrant, and then I have to get it posted.
So you wanna do it earlier?
Yeah, I mean, I've calculated, yeah, because your town meeting-
Then you tell me when it has to be done.
So March sixth, or February twenty-eighth, your choice.
Let's have a discussion. We have the president of SPHIA here, does that, does that make sense to you?
But you're outlining?
Yeah.
Are we inviting them to the public hearing, or something?
No, I, I mean, any, any resident would be invited, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think we would share it with lake associations, Malsum, Great East, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about, talking about that earlier, they're, you know, obviously, they're the ones that impacted more than anybody else.
Yes.
You know, they could give a, a little bit of insight on what they think.
Yeah.
So does that feel like enough time? So we could, you know, we could get it out, it'll be watermark draft, we can get it out by the end of the week to everyone.
It's a good plan for now. You gotta be flexible, we'll do the best we can.
So, March sixth, six o'clock will be the public hearing for those two items.
Okay.
All right, so back to the-
Finance director, we all got, if we, oop, oh, here, wanna pass that down?
Sir, thank you.
All right, so this is the, um, Town of Acton Job Opportunity Finance Director. The Town of Acton is currently accepting resumes for the position of finance director, the ideal candidate will have a strong financial background, including the ability to oversee the town cash management, budget development, purchasing, payroll, accounts payable, and capital planning. Additionally, he or she will have the skills to produce monthly reports, including cash flow analysis, balance sheets, benefit administrator, and profit and loss statements, this is a full-time position with a rewarding salary for the right person, Town of Acton offers health insurance, vision, dental, estate, retirement, PTO, and more, interested parties should be sent a packet of interest, including a cover letter, resume, three references, the Town of Acton's town administrator, thirty-five H Road, the position will remain open until filled, the Town of Acton is an equal opportunity employer.
Sounds good to me.
It's good.
Make a motion, we move this to, uh, authorize the posting of this position?
Second it.
On the favor?
Okay.
Awesome. Okay, so we are at, we've already done the executive session, we have a public comment, anybody got any comment? Go ahead.
Oh, my name is Jean Thiercoff, we have a property on, um, and, at ten Cliftondale Road, and I am here-
Where is it, whereabouts is that?
Cliftondale, it's off of Kilty, off of Man.
Okay, yep, yep.
And I believe I sent you a letter last week about the mining situation, and I'd like to read some of this into the public record and, and possibly, um, get your thoughts on this whole thing. Um, we have quest, the, the letter that I sent, this is the text, we have questions regarding Curtis's compliance with some of the conditions of the nineteen eighty-nine conditional use permit, including onsite storage of topsoil, hours of operation, and at least one incidence of clearing within the hundred-foot buffer zone with respect to blasting, and I think you got a letter today about that. And in particular, item eleven A on that conditional use permits, uh, and I quote, "Large rocks not suitable for breaking or hauling will be buried on the property." Most importantly, I urge you to contact, this was Director Moore at Jason, to contact Eric Cluck at the state DEP office, the excavation area is now at seven acres, and I sent an attachment with the wrong caption, but I've got a new copy of that, if you want it. Uh, with additional clearing, he'll be over fourteen acres, it might mean that that's operation needed to file a permit with the state of Maine as it's over the threshold of five acres, and Mr. Cluck is looking into this. And also, as you're aware, a number of property owners who are near the Curtis Mine have recently received notices from Hartford Structural Inspections regarding pre-blast inspections, and the letter raises a number of issues, I called HSI for more detail and learned that these inspections are being scheduled for the week of February twelfth, next week, as Curtis plans to commence blasting soon after that. The letter did not state that property owners must contact HSI within two weeks to schedule their inspections, otherwise, they would be opted out. The letter arrived in some mailboxes on, uh, January twenty-sixth, the fact that many of the roads are unplowed, there's no cover around foundations, and owners who are out of state and won't be able to admit the inspectors means that many properties will not have thorough documented inspections of foundations and roofs, et cetera, before the blasting begins, leaving owners with no recourse should they sustain damage. HSI is also not testing water, property owners must do this themselves, um, however, closed inaccessible camps will make water testing impossible prior blasting. Timing of this precludes many property owners from acting to protect their properties from potential damage due to the blasting at the Curtis Quarry. Um, I asked Jason to really scrutinize this operation, and I hope he does, but I would, I, I would like more eyes on this, I think, I'm not quite sure. We would like this blasting to be at, well, at least postponed until property owners can get up here and have their properties inspected.
Well, we can't postpone that, that's nothing we can do, there's no ordinance in the Town of Acton saying that there's any black, white.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm sort of at a loss as to what we can do at all, um.
There's really not a whole lot, other than, you know, I, I would contact the individual that owns the pit. I, I've already talked to him, and he said that if someone requests a water test, he'll do one, he will do one of them.
How can he do one when the, the camps are-
He may not be able to.
But-
Closed, in, how's he gonna get to the well?
You know, at the end of the day, it's a toughie, okay?
Yeah.
But, if I had a house, house, I was gonna put a house in beside your house, okay, um, I wanna, I hit ledge?
Mm-hmm.
I can blast that, right?
Yeah, that's, but that's, yes, I, I'm not just-
No difference, there's definitely no difference.
Well, the difference here is that this is a large operation.
Now, you got a large operation, yes, okay, but you're further away, if I have a house right next to your house, okay, there's nothing in Town of Acton that says I can't blast my solo hole, but, the person who does the blasting has to go by state, um, their state certified is stuff that they have to do.
Yeah.
They'd go in, they expect your home for a reason.
Mm-hmm.
They also put a seismograph, so to make sure that it doesn't go over a certain amount or whatevers, okay? Um, nothing would stop that person from doing that, right? Nothing would stop that person from doing that, correct? There's no difference.
Well, I, I think there's a difference in the sense that this is a very, this is a, I mean, you must have been by that pit.
It's a pit.
It's a huge pit. And it's, and I don't know whether they're operating under the terms of the 1989 agreement in the first place.
That's something our code officer will have to take a look at.
Yeah, yeah. And this blasting affects not just a few people, but a lot of people...
The blast won't affect anybody.
Well, the other concern I have is that that area is zoned as an aquifer protection zone. And when I read the ordinance, the verbiage is, I thought I wrote it down somewhere, but I didn't. It's something to the effect of this, to preserve and protect the significant sand and gravel aquifer on this place. And I, I wonder whether blasting over a protected aquifer couldn't have some pretty bad...
This is not my area.
Yeah.
What little I know is we've taken this to our council.
Yeah.
And our council has said that there's, the town has really no rights to sort of interfere in this activity. That what he's doing is within the regulations of the state for them to be able to do that. I understand your concerns and the concerns of all the property owners there. But from what our council is telling us, it's really, unfortunately, not a town issue or some, once, something that we can sort of join with you on. There's just no...
It's a civil issue.
It's, it's, it's a matter between you and, and the pit owner, it seems to me. And whether or not some of the things you've identified here have merit and can create some legal standing, I don't know. But it's not something the town has any legal interest in, if you will, by ordinance or, or state law to make sure that we interfere in this. I, I don't think we have the right to do so.
And he's following the conditions.
DEP's been, been on site. Matter of fact, I believe they left it today. Because I've been in contact with it, because everybody's bombarded me with emails.
Yeah.
I got to make sure that this individual is at least responding back. I don't have to, but I'm trying to help out here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To make sure that everybody's, you know, being contacted. I'm not emailing you back because we shouldn't have anything to do with it.
No, I understand. I, I think I'm coming here slightly out of desperation.
The biggest thing is make sure that if he volunteers any inspection, take whatever you can get out of him.
Well, yeah. And this is part of the issue, is that he volunteered these, these inspections, but didn't give anyone parameters as to how they can go about doing this. And when I talked to the lady at HSI, I mean, I've got the letter here, which I'm certainly happy to share with you. Homeowners were not, not told that they need to call HSI to schedule these things next week. Many of these homeowners are in Colorado and New Jersey. I don't even know where.
So the problem is this. If that company says, we're going to come in next week, and you say, I can't be there because I live in Colorado or whatever, okay, and they can't, and they don't postpone this, they're just setting themselves up for libel.
Well, that's the question, because...
Your lawyer's going to have to tell you, you know.
Yeah.
I, I think this is a, is a civil matter.
Yeah.
Between abutters and the pit owner. And so if, if, if you as abutters feel you have, through your research of the regulations, some potential action against them, then I think that's something you're going to have to pursue. The town's not going to be involved in it.
Okay.
Sorry. You know, it's just, we have no standing in this.
He meets all the conditions. He meets all the conditions that the planning board set back in the day for him. And we've checked all of that.
Well, I have, I have, my neighbor is one of the abutters, and he said that he, he's got, he's within 10 feet of his property line. He's actually mining.
And that's one of the...
And that...
So it has to be a condition. So I know there was some discussion, Jason came to me about this, said there were some, some recommendations that might have been in those planning board minutes versus the conditions on the actual approval. And the conditions on the approval are what he has to follow.
We'll, we'll make sure that our code officer looks into it.
Yeah, okay, so just...
Make sure everything's by the book. I believe he already has.
Okay, so this is the, this is the document I have. That's Harvey Weiss, or, yeah, Harvey Weiss Civil Consultants from September 27th of 1989?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Is that what we're...
I don't have it in front of me. Did Jason reply to your email?
No.
Okay, so he's got a lot of them, and we'll make sure that...
I know, I know, I know. And I, and that's fine. I know, and, you know, and anyway, this does say all excavation will be setback greater than 100 feet with natural vegetation maintained within that 100-foot buffer zone.
So just, yeah, point that out to him.
Yeah.
Make sure he'll...
So, I'm sorry, we can't help you.
Yeah.
I would, I would, myself, if I were you, I would get legal advice.
Yeah.
Have some look at it. That's the only way you're going to be able to do it. But at this point, our code officer, as far as I know, everything is on board.
Make sure he's got all of them.
Yeah.
And we'll make sure that he contacts you, or at least emails you back with some sort of response.
Okay, if we find evidence that, you know, he missed something at an inspection like this setback in particular, what would our action be?
Well, I guess he'd have to come back to us.
In that he's violated a town ordinance?
No, he's violated his conditional use permit.
That would be a Jason, let's start with that.
It would be a Jason, but, yeah, eventually.
I think he'll address it if that's accurate.
Yeah.
If it's conditional use.
If you have evidence of that, get in touch with the code officer.
Okay, all right.
Fair enough, and he'll, he'll...
Thanks.
...get an opinion.
Okay.
Good luck to you.
So last week, the school committee came to you asking for permission to have a special town meeting so that we could line up some work for the summer, have time to line up some work for the summer. And you took a vote on it. It was a two-to-two vote, and you kind of indicated at the end of the meeting that you might reconsider that again this week. And so the first thing I'm here is to ask you if you are going to reconsider that vote again this week.
So I spoke to Dan. Dan's been in contact with you guys. And when we had the, when we talked about it the other night there, you know, that was before we had our budget meeting. And so after we had our budget meeting, you know, pretty much until, I don't want to spend any extra money right now until we know what your budget's going to be. And that's pretty much what I, where I'm going to roll with it at this point in time. I, I got to see what the, the numbers are going to be. And so I guess, at the end of the day, Judy, we're, we're worried about what we've gotten, surpluses, all this. I can't see with our increase of, what are we at right now, six? We're at 6%. You guys are what? You could be at 6% yourself. And, and you're talking about spending $465,000 that right before our town meeting. And then we just cut everybody's budgets and stuff. I, I have no problem after town meeting, or you can include that stuff in your stuff. You know, vote on it then. I just, if we, if we reconsider it now, you're talking, dating it out, we'll be three weeks before town meeting, now the special town meeting. And I, I'm not going to do that.
It would be more like five weeks before.
Five?
And...
Oh, yeah?
Really, we're not spending money that's going to come out of this budget, okay? The money, the money that's in the school undesigned funds is designated only for school spending. Do you understand that?
Oh, I, I get that.
I do understand that, yeah.
So, so...
Can I suggest this to you, Judy? I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
My guess is you have some efforts to go through bidding and procurement in order to secure contracts and/or agreements on the various things you want to do. Why don't you assume it's going to pass the town meeting and do your legwork now, so when the town meeting occurs, you'll be able to the next day issue your contracts?
I guess my, I guess my disappointment, and the school committee's disappointment is that we came to request a special town meeting, and all of a sudden, it turned into a big financial thing.
Well, it is financial, everything about it.
It is financial, but these are school funds. And the school committee was requesting permission to spend school funds. These are school funds that are set aside for school purposes, for us to use within the next three years if we have a plan to use them. And we do have a plan. We gave you our plan. We told you what our plan was. And you know that we always give back to the town as much as we can. You kind of indicated when we came last week that you were just hoping we were going to give you a whole big chunk of all that, all that we had left over.
I, I, I hope I didn't mean...
That's kind of, you're just like, Jesus, this, this lot, this list is really pretty scary, because we were kind of hoping we were going to get a bigger chunk of it back.
I was joking around, but at the same time, Judy, so, you know, you got about $600,000 surplus this year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's what, that's what...
I can't remember.
I think that's why...
It goes back to 2023.
Okay.
Yeah, 23, 23 had a $607,000 surplus.
Okay. And you've already, the last years, you've already put in your three-year plan, right? Because you guys adopted a new, a new policy, because you had, you know, a certain amount of money. So the state require, you went with the state requirements, right? Of the three-year plan.
We didn't adopt a new policy. It is a state, it's a state policy.
But you weren't doing that before, right?
Yes, we were.
Oh, you were?
We've always been doing that.
Okay, well, maybe I'm mistaken there.
Yeah. It's, it's a state policy that you, your unassigned funds, you can have a three-year plan to use those.
Yeah.
If we don't use those unassigned funds on projects for the school, then inevitably, we're going to have to come back to the town and ask the town, again, to fund those projects, which doesn't make any sense, because we have the money to pay for those projects. So...
So the, this, this $465,000 that you guys aren't looking at spending right now, is that part of that three-year plan that you've already put aside?
It's part of our plan for spending, yes.
So it's part of the three-year already? So, I'm just trying to figure this out here. But I just don't like the time. I, I, have any town, a special town meeting, spend 465 right before our town meeting? Just doesn't...
I will, I will say, being liaison to the committee, seeing the work they do, talking to them, and Mr. Ross, I think, I mean, they did emphasize this was all dependent on getting back the, my God, what was the word?
I really want to see what the budget's going to do.
The audit. And they're expecting that in October. I remember at the October meeting.
Yeah.
I don't think the timing has anything to do with anything they did. I think it's just pars, parsycum stance. I mean, I, I, you received the letter that the, the school committee sent to us, and like, and I'll say, it did convince me a little bit more. I mean, the people in town elect you folks to represent the school in the best interests. I trust what you folks are saying. I mean, so I mean, I, I would support this, but that's if we want to bring this up again.
You would what?
I would, I would support a town, special town meeting. I mean, I did last week, but I know we're talking about if we even want to bring it up again, but...
Here's the deal, okay? Everybody kind of thinks the school department is a department of the town. And in one respect, we are. We're a department of the town in that the town elects the school committee, and the town approves the school budget. Other than that, the school department is a self-governing department that works under the Department of Education and the main school management completely. The school budget is, as in every town in Maine, is always the biggest budget in town. It has to be. Has a lot of employees, has a lot of kids, has a lot of transportation, has a lot of, in, in our case, tuition students, has a lot of extra things. There are, you know, fixed items in our budget. And...
80% of your budget's fixed, correct?
80% of our budget is fixed. So these things that we want to get done can't just get squeezed into that 20% that we have to play with, because it's not, not a very big playground. It's very small. You know, we've watched you work with your budget. You know, you've watched us work with our budget. And we wouldn't propose to tell you or make suggestions to you on how to do your budget. And we wouldn't really expect you, we would expect you to respect the way we do our budget and the way we want us to spend our money and to do things that the school needs, because we know what the school needs. So I guess I'm just saying that if you're not going to reconsider it, I, I find it very disappointing because we just came to you with a request for a special town meeting so that we could get this, get these things going. And it turned out to be all about money instead of just listening to our request for a special town meeting. That's very disappointing.
All right. So it really is this. It's a special town meeting to transfer funds we already have and have had for a long time. So now, we looked at our long-range planning, and we said, what projects can we get done finally? But we've been waiting, we've been, you know, when we did the parking lot, we waited five years, okay? We put away money, we put away money. The ne, the year I had the final amount, the fifth year, a whole thing went up at the transfer station. There was no waiting to do the transfer station repavement. I was like, what, what are we doing? Why are we so cautious about our money and putting things away? Right now, things are skyrocketing, the price of things. And that's why we want to get this done. In order to get things done, you have to go way in advance, because you can't get that machine or that thing because of supply chain issues. We can't just, you know, and we try to do things. As soon as, you know, June 5th or whatever comes along, that's when we got to, you know, we only have a two-month span of trying to get things done, you know, while the kids are not in school. So that's why we just wanted a special town meeting to transfer, because we have to go to the town to transfer this from the undesigned fund into these little categories to get the work done. I don't know why it can't be done.
Mary, we got a, we got a town meeting here in April. And that's where we plan on doing it.
Right, but this is...
You can put all that, all that...
When you go to the town meeting, you're raising funds. You're asking the townspeople to say...
You have to raise that. You can, you can vote at that town meeting.
Transfer.
For money, transfer that money.
I know.
Just like any other time.
I know, but...
Just like we do when we're...
Because, and it could be very confusing to people, because it looks like we're trying to raise $435,000 or whatever it is.
I think the, the people that go to town meeting will know the difference when it's written, the transfer of the money from the undesigned fund. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. Even I can figure that out.
I do have a question, because I'm very new to this budgeting process. So looking at this total cost, would this impact the $200 that we were expecting to get from the school? Like, how does that?
I mean, it all depends. I mean...
I don't think so, but I, they have said so, but I'm not sure.
Well, so that's, because that's where my thought process, if it doesn't, then...
That's a question for the school, not for us.
I guess, I guess at this point, is there a motion on the floor?
I, I move to reconsider the issue of the school holding a special town meeting for their, to reallocate funds from the undesigned, for these special projects.
So you made a motion?
Yes, I moved to reconsider.
Is there a second? Because if it fails, we'll move on. But are we, oh, we're public comment?
Public comment.
Yeah, we're still in public.
Public comment. No more public comment? Charlie?
They don't want to hear it from me. Oh. Well, anyway, I would hope that you would reconsider and actually do what they're asking. I, I don't see what the issue is. But on the thing that I originally came up here for was, on the town website, talking about publishing stuff, as far as public hearings. When you go to the hearing tab, there's nothing there. But if you go all the way down to the bottom, then all of a sudden, there's a little blurb about a public hearing scheduled for zoning February 15th, but it doesn't give...
Yeah, it says, right on the very, so it is on the homepage. I'll have them add it to that page. You're absolutely right. Right on the very homepage, so public hearing, and I just sent the Warren Finance an email. It says, click here for more information. When you click on that, it brings you a PDF to the notice, and then both of the zoning articles are on there.
Right, but you have a tab for hearings. When I'm looking on...
Oh, it should be in both places. I don't disagree.
I'm looking here. I don't see that unless I scroll all the way down.
I will send him an email right now.
I was just saying, I know that with some websites, they have two versions, because I've done some website design, so they have a version that you see on your laptop, and then they have a mobile version. So maybe, just making sure that Dan's keeping, editing that mobile version, so that if someone's looking on their phone, they have the accessibility they would if they're looking on their computer.
Got it.
Because I see the thing, but I'm trying to click on it. It's not bringing me to any information.
I just had another quick question for you. You're talking about transparency and stuff. As you know, the school committee puts out a school budget book that, that lines everything up. And you're talking now about combining everything into articles. Are they going to get to see any of this stuff that we've been seeing tonight on here to know what is actually in those articles before they vote on them, or are they just going to see?
Are you asking, are we going to publish a budget book like?
Yeah, are they going to get to see anything like what the, what the warrant and finance committee is looking at? Or are they just going to get to see just the article?
I mean, we will have the complete line-by-line breakdown. Is that what you mean? So, that, yeah, I mean, it doesn't get broken down much more than the spreadsheet that we put up there. I mean, that's line-by-line. So, that will go on the website now that the board's moved it forward, and certainly, they've always handed them out at town meeting as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, do we hear a motion?
I moved to re-adjourn at 8:51 PM.
Hello, Trevor? Good night.